Good evening, everyone. I think we're ready to begin our regular scheduled meeting. It's Monday, August 19th, 2024. We've just come from a study session. And for all of our guests, we do have copies of the agenda by the door, as well as a sheet if you could sign in. We would appreciate that. So first, we will start with a call to order. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll? President Huffman.
Here.
Mayor Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Insland.
Here.
Mr. Kessler.
Here.
Mr. Liddy.
Here.
Mrs. Pittinger.
Here.
Mr. Slavel.
Here.
Thank you. Next, we'll have our prayer for guidance and pledge of allegiance. Chaplain Mark Plummer is here tonight. Thank you for being here. You will lead us in the prayer.
Thank you for the invitation. While I am Mark Plummer, I serve as a volunteer chaplain for the Tipt city, police, fire, EMS services, and I'm blessed to do that. Please bow your heads as we go to God in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening seeking your guidance and wisdom as this council gathers to serve our community. I ask that you would grant them clarity of mind, strength of heart, and a spirit of cooperation as they discuss and deliberate the matters before them. Father God, thank you for the men and women of this council, for the giving of their time or talents as they work so hard to bring peace and prosperity to our community. I pray a special blessing over them and their families. Father, I also thank you for our brave first responders, our police officers, firefighters, and EMS personnel. I pray you watch over them and always bring them home safely after their shift. Lastly, I ask and pray that God would bless America and that God will continue to bless this great city, Tipt city, Ohio. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the authority for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, as I said, the agenda is at the entrance. If you'd like to follow along, would a council member like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So move. Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes or revisions to tonight's agenda? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you take the vote on approving the agenda? Mrs. Pittinger.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. Insland.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
President Huffman. Yes. Mr. Slavel.
Yes.
Next, we have minutes. We have the minutes from the August 5th, 2024 City Council Work Session. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those minutes?
All made.
A second?
Second.
Are there any changes or revisions, comments on those minutes? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll to approve the minutes of the August 5th City Council Work Session? Mr. Slavel.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittinger.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Today.
Mr. Insland.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
President Huffman. Yes. Next, we have the minutes of the August 5th, 2024 City Council Meeting. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Are there any changes or comments on the minutes? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on approval of the minutes of the August 5th City Council Meeting. Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Insland.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Today.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittinger.
Yes.
Mr. Slavel.
Yes.
President Huffman. Yes. We have no presentations, proclamations, or awards tonight. We have no ordinances for second reading. Under resolutions, we'll need some patience because we have several resolutions that we'll read through, and we need to do each of those individually. So first, we have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Tatman Associates of Cleveland, Ohio, for the purchase of structures, busing, and switches at a cost of $724,760. Mr. Mack?
Yes, thank you. The city has recently completed the engineering and design for Substation Number Four here on the west side of the town. The city solicited bids for all the major equipment necessary to complete the substation project. Resolutions eight through G on tonight's agenda are all pieces of legislation necessary to purchase all the major equipment items necessary for Substation Number Four. We ask that the city council approve these resolutions as presented.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mack. Would someone like to sponsor this resolution?
I'll sponsor.
A second?
I'll second.
Are there any council comments related to the resolution? Hearing none. The public hearing is now open. Would anyone from the public like to speak to this resolution? Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Madam Clerk, please call the vote to approve this resolution. Mr. Slavel.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittinger.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. Insland.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
President Huffman. Yes. Resolution 3024. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Anixter Inc. of Hamilton, Ohio, for the purchase of three 69 KV vacuum circuit breakers at a cost of $327,697.65. Mr. Mack, do you have any additional comments on this?
I do not.
Would someone like to sponsor this resolution?
I'll sponsor.
A second?
Second.
Are there any council comments related to the resolution? Hearing none. The public hearing is now open. If a member of the public would like to speak to this resolution, please come forward. Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, please call the vote to approve this resolution. Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittinger.
Yes.
Mr. Slavel. President Huffman. Yes. Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Insland.
Yes.
Resolution 3124. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Robert S. Hawley Company of Columbus, Ohio, for the purchase of one 69 KV circuit switcher at a cost of $199,960. Mr. Mack, do you have any additional comments?
I do not.
Could I have a sponsor for this resolution?
I will.
A second?
Second.
Are there any council comments related to this resolution? Hearing none. The public hearing is now open. If a member of the public would like to speak to the resolution, please come forward. Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, please call the vote to approve the resolution. Mrs. Pittinger.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
President Huffman. Yes. Mr. Insland. Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mr. Slavel.
Yes.
Resolution 3224. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Virginia Transformer Corp. of Roanoke, Virginia, for the purchase of one 69-12.47 KV power transformer at a cost of $1,048,969. Mr. Mack, do you have any comments on this?
I don't.
Could I have a sponsor for this resolution?
I'll sponsor. Move to adoption.
I'll second.
Thank you. Are there any council comments related to the resolution? Hearing none. The public hearing is now open. Would a member from the public like to speak to this resolution? Please come forward. Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. Slavel.
Yes.
Mr. Insland.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittinger.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
President Huffman. Yes. Resolution 3324. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Myers Controlled Power of Canton, Ohio, for the purchase of one lineup indoor 15 KV switchgear at a cost of $766,475. Mr. Mack, do you have any additional comments?
I do not.
Could I have a sponsor for this resolution?
I'll sponsor. Move to adoption.
A second?
Second.
Are there any council comments related to the resolution? Hearing none. The public hearing is now open. If a member from the public would like to speak to the resolution, please come forward. Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, please call the vote on approving the resolution. Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers. President Huffman. Yes. Mr. Slavel.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittinger.
Yes.
Mr. Insland.
Yes.
Resolution 3424. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with SEL of West Lafayette, Indiana, for the purchase of four 69 KV relay and control panels at a cost of $206,47. Mr. Mack, do you have additional comments?
No.
Would a council member like to sponsor this resolution?
I'll sponsor.
Could I have a second? Thank you. Do council members have any comments related to the resolution? Hearing none. The public hearing is now open. If a member of the public would like to speak to the resolution, please come forward. Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, please call the roll to approve the resolution. Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mr. Insland.
Yes.
President Huffman. Yes. Mr. Slavel.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittinger.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
Resolution 3524. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Peak Electric of West Toledo, Ohio, for the purchase of 12 333 KV A voltage regulators at a cost of $471,012. Mr. Mack, do you have additional comments?
Thank you.
Would a council member like to sponsor this resolution?
I'll sponsor.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any council comments related to the resolution? Hearing none. The public hearing is now open. If a member of the public would like to speak to the resolution, please come forward. Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, please call the roll to approve the resolution. Mr. Slavel. Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mr. Insland.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittinger.
Yes.
President Huffman. Yes. Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
Resolution 3624. Next, we have a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Law Office of the Miami County Public Defender. Mr. Mack?
Yes, this resolution will allow the city to enter into a contract with the Miami County Public Defender's Office. This is an annual contract with no price increase from the contract we had in place last year. We ask that the city council approve this resolution.
Would a council member like to sponsor this?
I will.
A second?
I'll second.
Any council comment related to the resolution?
Just to be clear, the 4,884,88, that's based off of the amount of cases that they had last year is what's this year, right? So if we have more cases this year, it's not necessarily going to be able to see that in 2025.
You won't see that until the pre-2024.
This is what it is for 2024.
Yeah, I think they tried the Public Defender's Office. Had discussions with them in the past when we were new, and they really just take a comprehensive look and then determine, in relation to the size of the other communities, how many cases were running. And obviously, this year, they determined it to be about the same.
And that's cases that the Public Defender's Office is involved in, not people that are getting their own private attorneys.
That's correct. It wouldn't be any jailable offense.
Okay, thank you.
And for a point of just public information, Mr. Freeman, can you distinguish the work of the Public Defender versus what you do as the law director?
Yes, so I serve as the prosecutor. So in cases where we have either felonies, because we conduct felony preliminary hearings at court, or we have a case in which it amounts to a minimum to being their lowest level, being at least 30 days, highest level being up to 180 days. During those times, folks just don't understand that they can get to their own attorney or they can't afford it. At that point in time, the court recognizes that. They fill out a packet and they indicate off, basically, that to David, you know, what their assets are and what their liabilities are soon as they can, otherwise afford an attorney. That's what the court will hold in mind. And then I would then deal with that individual.
And you're serving as the prosecutor, so it would be not possible for you to serve in the role as the Public Defender for the city. So that's why we need to engage in a contract.
Correct. Thank you.
Are there any other council comments related to this resolution? Okay, hearing none. The public hearing is now open. If a member from the public would like to speak to this resolution, please come forward. Hearing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll to approve this resolution? Mrs. Pittinger.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
President Huffman. Yes. Mr. Insland.
Yes.
Mr. Slavel.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Resolution 3724. Next, we have a resolution transferring $150,000 from the city of Tipt city, Ohio, to the Community Improvement Corporation of Tipt city, Ohio, to be used for seed money for a revolving loan program of $100,000 and professional services related to the Uptown redevelopment contract of $50,000. Mr. Mack?
Yes, I think we discussed this a little bit at last city council meeting and study session. Again, this resolution will transfer $150,000 from the city of Tipt city to the Community Investment Corporation of Tipt city. For $100,000 of that will be for the revolving loan program for local businesses. And then again, the $50,000 for professional services related to the Uptown redevelopment project.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Would a council member like to sponsor the resolution?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any council comments?
I would just say that personally, I'm very excited about the revolving loan program. $100,000 is not an exuberant amount of money. It does allow the CIC to take on some projects to work out in the case the loan program may have without overextending itself. I think it's a good start. You know, the goal of this is ultimately, in 20 years, that the CIC loan fund is self-sustaining with interest rates. And I strongly believe that this is a good start for our city to take an active involvement with our businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. I think it's also important to note that, like you said, it's self-sustaining, but that this would not be at a cost to the city ultimately. This should work in the way that other cities have modeled, that this was modeled after Troy, who's had a successful program in place for many years. And they've earned money from that that helps with other expenses that the city may have. And it also helps the small businesses. And there will be an application process involved that they will be selected applicants as, you know, there is a guarantee of funds with each application. They have to meet certain criteria. Are there any other council comments? Okay, hearing none. The public hearing is now open. If a member of the public would like to speak to this resolution, please come forward. Hearing no one. The public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, please call the roll to approve this resolution. Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mr. Insland.
Yes.
President Huffman. Yes. Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. Slavel.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittinger.
Yes.
Resolution 3824. Next, under ordinances for first reading, we have an ordinance amending 2024 appropriations, authorizing a repayment of a 2023 advance of funds, issuance of a 2024 advance of funds, and modifying the annual operating budget as a result of this action. Mr. Mack?
Yes, thank you. This is an appropriation ordinance for additional expenditures that have come up over the course of this year that we did not anticipate back at budget time. Just a few of those to note. Some of those items include corporate income tax refund, additional wages for new police employees, and changes due to the open enrollment period for health insurance for the city employees. We're asking that the city adopt this ordinance upon public hearing next meeting.
Would a council member like to sponsor this ordinance?
I'll sponsor.
Thank you. Next, we have an ordinance modifying code section 94.42, 9.4, I'm sorry, 94.60 and 94.62 regarding nuisances. Mr. Mack?
Yeah, again, as discussed at the August 5th study session, staff has recommended minor changes to chapter 94 of the Tipt city code ordinances regarding nuisances. These changes include modification of the methodology for providing notice to citizens regarding nuisance issues, as well as cleaning up typos and clarification of certain language in that code.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mack. Would a council member like to sponsor this ordinance?
I'll sponsor.
Thank you. Next, we have an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum principal amount of $4,500,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of acquiring approximately 12.15 acres of real property near the intersection of West Main Street and South Tippecanoe Drive, all in support of economic development and job creation within the city. Mr. Mack?
Thank you. This ordinance is the first step in addressing the concerns of the community regarding the condition of certain properties in the uptown area. Working with water development as a consultant, this ordinance will allow the city to put financing into place should the city choose to move forward with acquisition of a property. We intend to have additional information provided for the public at a future council meeting here in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Would a council member like to sponsor this ordinance?
I would.
Moving on to motions. We have a motion to combine the capital improvement workshop and operating budget workshop for Monday, September 30th, 2024. This motion also cancels the previously scheduled capital improvement workshop on September 23rd, 2024, and the operating budget workshop on October 28th, 2024. Mr. Mack?
Yes, after discussion internally with staff as well as council, we're asking to combine the operating and budget workshops with the city council into one workshop combined that would be, you know, held together.
Okay, thank you. Would a council member like to make a motion to approve this?
So move. Second.
Okay, did you get a? Thank you. Are there any council comments related to this motion? Hearing none. The public hearing is now open. If any member of the public would like to speak to this motion, please come forward. Hearing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, please call the vote to approve the motion. Mrs. Pittinger.
Yes.
Mr. Slavel.
Yes.
President Huffman. Yes. Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Insland.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, we have a motion authorizing the police chief and the city manager to sign an F2 permit application for the downtown Tipt city partnership for their 2024 Harvest Fest street party to be held on October 19th, 2024. Mr. Mack?
Yes, we're asking council to approve this as the, that allows myself and the police chief to sign the liquor permit for Harvest Fest that you do annually here.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve this motion?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Are there any council comments related to the motion? Hearing none. The public hearing is open. If a member of the public would like to speak to the motion, please come forward. Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, please call the roll to approve this motion. Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittinger.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. Insland?
Yes.
Mr. Sjegel?
Yes.
President Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to miscellaneous, we have on the schedule a public hearing to appeal a tree board decision for the disapproval of removing a tree located in front of Twenty Miles Avenue. And, Mr. Mack?
Uh, yes, thank you. A resident here in the city at Twenty Miles Avenue has requested that city council review the decision made by the tree board at the June twelfth, twenty twenty-four tree board meeting, uh, which denied the request for removal of a tree located in the curb lawn in front of the property at Twenty Miles Avenue. Just as a reminder, as we move forward through this process, that, uh, to council, that five affirmative votes of council are necessary to reverse, modify, or reject the decision of the tree board.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. Would a council member like to make a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Or second, one of your needs.
Okay, so the public hearing is now open. Would anyone like to provide testimony? If so, please come forward. And then we are going to want your full name, as well as your address, and then you'll be sworn in for the hearing.
Oh, okay.
Do you swear?
Me or you?
You want me to do this? Swear? Okay. How about if we gave your name and address first and then I'll swear you in?
Sure, Catherine Pfeffer, Twenty Miles Avenue, Tip City, Ohio.
Okay, thank you. And do you? I'm sorry. Oh, please raise your right hand. This is the first time I've sworn. Do you swear and affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And you have testimony for us?
Yes.
Would it be okay if I pass something else? Approach and pass us out?
Thank you. Um, so in that packet, um, it's kind of an overview of what I'm going to talk about, and then there are some pictures. Part of that you'll see is talking about damage that's been done to my house and property surrounding it. And then the other pictures are just showing the size of the tree compared to my house and compared to the houses around. So it says, "Good evening, city council members. My name is Kate Pfeffer, and I reside at Twenty Miles Avenue, Tip City. I am here today to seek approval for the removal of a large sycamore tree located between the sidewalk and then the road at the front right of my house. This request is not made lightly, but out of growing concern for the safety of my family, neighbors, and property. In the summer of twenty twenty-two, I first submitted a request to remove this tree due to the damage it was causing to the sidewalk and the frequent fall of large branches and sticks onto my house and property. Unfortunately, that request was denied, and instead, the tree was trimmed and lifted. On May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, a large branch fell from the tree and shattered the back windshield of my sister's car. At the time, my three-year-old niece and one-year-old nephew were playing in the front yard under the tree. The idea of what could have happened should my sister and I not have acted quickly to move my niece and nephew from under the tree terrifies me. The pictures I have attached show the extent of the damage and underscore the potential danger this tree poses. Following the incident on June fifth, twenty twenty-four, I submitted another request to remove the tree emphasizing the risks posed by falling branches. This request was again denied. Determined to mitigate the risk, during the week of June tenth, twenty twenty-four, I contacted four tree service providers for estimates on further trimming and lifting the tree. Three out of four providers recommended removal rather than trimming, citing the tree's type and size. Notably, Tom Miller of AAA Tree Landscaping, a licensed arborist, stated that the size of the tree is far too large for the space that it is in. Despite these professional opinions, I proceeded to trim lower branches and trim the tree as much as possible after the denial. Yet, the danger remains. Most recently, on July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, I submitted another application for the removal of the tree, highlighting not only the property damage, but also the risks posed by the tree's large size relative to the small space that it occupies, as noted by professional opinion that I did not have the second time that I requested the removal. If the tree were to fall, it could cause significant damage to three nearby houses and power lines, endangering the lives of residents and visitors. The tree's decline health is evident through early leaf drops and the continuous falling of sticks and branches. This situation is not only a property concern, but a serious safety issue. I've increased the property value of my home, um, by over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars since purchasing my home in twenty twenty. Throw it down to the stud, two-year renovation, with the help of my family. This is my dad. He, when I say help of my family, I mean that he did most of it. I paid for it. I proposed to replace the sycamore. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm deeply concerned about the potential for the tree to cause further damage to that investment as well. I proposed to replace the sycamore with one or two smaller trees in my front yard, ensuring safety while maintaining the greenery and aesthetic of the neighborhood. In conclusion, I ask you to consider the safety risks, the professional opinions, and the significant investment that I have made in my property. Approving this request will prevent future accidents and ensure the safety of all being of those on Miles Avenue. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Mrs. Pfeffer, can I ask you one question? What was the reason that all of the requests were denied?
I only said that the tree was healthy.
Thank you.
But you've got three out of four that have recommended it be removed?
Yes.
Well, this is another thing we do as a city. We put trees, city trees, in a curb lawn, and we require property owners to maintain them. And you say this to go under the power lines. You keep trimming, and sycamores are softwood. You keep trimming, it's going to imbalance the tree. It's going to eventually fall. It probably is dying, probably is rotten someplace already. It's not climbing to see because I don't got many racers in the river, sycamores. It's because we require this to go, we put these trees in, we don't, which we've changed, kind of hope that, we don't ask the property owner, we just put it in, and then they're required to pay for all damage done to the sidewalk curbs, et cetera, their homes.
Maybe what we can do is, um, we will limit our questions to the witnesses that's here now, then we have a member of the tree board that will also speak, and then council will have an opportunity to discuss this once a motion has been made, whether to affirm or, um, reverse that decision. So if council members have questions?
I just have one question. You are committing to replanning some trees in its place, correct?
Yes.
Okay, what type of trees are you going to be planting there, do you know?
No.
Something more appropriate?
Yes, size appropriate, yes.
Are there any other council questions? Okay. So you can step down now if you're done, if you had any other testimony, you're welcome to provide that. Okay, thank you. Now, is there anyone else that would like to speak to this? Okay. If we could have your name and address, and then you'll be sworn in as well.
Okay. I'm Karen Jackson, nine three seven Hunter Street Drive. I'm here, I was asked to come, kind of explain to you.
If I could swear, if, I'll swear again, so. If you could raise your hand, and do you swear and affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now you can go ahead with your testimony.
Okay. I was asked to attend as representative of the tree board, the tree advisory board. I've been a member for eight years. I'm the new person on there. There are three members, all volunteers, and we also work closely with Tony Hunt, the public work superintendent, and with Todd Samples, he is the city's certified arborist. And all five of us examine every tree whenever we get a request, or every site when, if the request is to plant a tree. And all five of us are graduates of the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Tree Academy, which is a two-year program. So we're not just walking in off the street and deciding. This is a pretty, pretty intense training for it. And our mission is the protection of the urban forest. And as I said, we, all five of us, examine every request. And one of our abiding principles is we cannot recommend the removal of a healthy tree in order to protect, um, the city's canopy. So, um, all five of us went out two years ago, looked at the tree. Yes, it is a very large tree. At this time, well, the tree is probably fifty, sixty years old, and my guess is that it was never planted by the city. It was planted by the developer when West Edge was built. And if we were planting a tree there today, of course, we would not plant the one that's there. But it is a very healthy tree, in our opinion. Does it need trimming occasionally? Of course. It's really large, and all trees drop branches and need trimming. And as we looked at it, um, we all agreed that it is a healthy tree, and therefore, we could not approve its removal. Also, I might mention, it is the only tree in a curb lawn on that block. And the house face faces west. Mrs. Pfeffer's done a wonderful job on this. The house is very attractive, and, um, she gets a lot of benefit from the tree, I'm sure, by the shade, since the house faces west. So that might be the only positive she could say for it. But, um, again, we cannot recommend the removal of a healthy tree. Have you all, any of you had a chance to look at it?
I don't buy it, Dan. It's a lot of tree in that space.
So you were able, it sounds like your standard is healthy trees stay?
Yes.
So it's also sounds as though, you know, she testified that there were issues, property damage, a threat to children playing. Would, would that decision possibly be different if you were bound by that standard?
Um, well, I should have said that we cannot recommend the removal of a healthy tree unless it is a safety issue. We did that at our meeting last Wednesday. We approved removal of a couple of trees because they're either planted too close to a telephone pole, or, um, it's one, there's one on Third Street near Broadway that is leaning like this, and it's also dead. But, um, there was one on, I believe, North Third that we recommended because it is hanging over the street. So we did recommend that one, and it is a very healthy tree. But, um, safety is our consideration. Unfortunately, um, Tip City does not have the staff or the finances to maintain the trees that we plant, um, unless they become safety issues. We do not provide trimming. It becomes the homeowner's responsibility.
Even if allowed?
I would not recommend removal of this, despite the fact that it, even if it was allowed under your standard? No. No, I couldn't do that.
Now, I see where it's accroaching the power lines, which obviously the city trims occasionally, but that, it's definitely not going to work. And if that tree has decided to go apart good, that's going to take out quite, quite a bunch of power and create some issues. And it's also, it's something, it's something size with the power lines, in my opinion, personally, is, is too big. I've seen other trees where the power lines have gone through and they've trimmed the middle out, and after a few years, the tree gently separates and lays both sides.
That's the approved way that the Ohio Department of Natural Resources has told us.
Well, I understand that, but I've seen it go the years. It just doesn't, uh, make sense. As I was saying earlier, we put the burden of responsibility, and even though we may not have planted a tree fifty, sixty years ago, we have put the burden of maintaining that tree because we want these trees for tree city, et cetera, on the property who do not have forty-foot lift racks or five thousand dollars to keep maintaining them. And I think it's a, I, I personally have a problem with what to go with it, but, uh, I, I, you don't think that those power lines are, pose a potential safety problem?
Not for this tree, no.
So if, if this is the only tree along, it looks like, from the photo that was provided by, um, the applicant? What happened to the other trees? They wouldn't have just planted one sycamore tree?
Over the years, they've all died and not been replaced.
So did they fall or were they removed by the city after? I mean, at what point were they removed or how?
I think Hurricane I did a lot of that, yeah.
The windstorm of Labor Day weekend about ten years ago took a lot of them down.
Two thousand, right?
Is the, is there a sidewalk compromise there with that tree being so long?
We do not address sidewalk issues.
You don't look to see what it is?
Well, we look, sure, we look, but, um, we don't, we don't make any recommendations based on that. It's just not part of our task. We focus on the tree.
So what would have to happen in order to be, like, under your criteria, what is the safety risk? How do you decide what a safety risk is?
If, um, if we felt that it was, um, rotten on the trunk, and we felt that it was likely, or not likely, but possibly going to fall, or as I said, if it leans over the street?
But like the property damage doesn't, like, falling branches, does it cause property damage or maybe a threat to people underneath?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't see that. You know, we didn't see any property damage when we went, so we didn't, we couldn't address that.
Now, would that have changed your decision? If you, if you did see that or knew that to be true, that the car was damaged or that kids were close to being injured?
Well, sure. But, um, we didn't see, most of the branches are pretty high. And we did not observe any large, any evidence of large branches that broke off or anything. It looked pretty evenly, um, leafed out all around the whole tree.
Okay.
I, I mean, I will say that there are good things that come from having a lot of trees, and cities are generally ten to twenty degrees cooler when they are covered with trees for the road. I was saying this, I mean, I live on Main Street, there's trees the whole way through, and there's a very notable difference when I'm walking downtown, when I'm under the canopy and when I'm not. But you don't really have that here. You have one tree that's kind of out of place. I think that's somewhat of a different situation than just kind of the full effect of something like Maine where there is a canopy creating that. I don't think you're necessarily getting that with this one tree. I mean, I could be wrong. I guess the homeowner would be able to see more to that than anybody else, but, and it also does strike me as odd that if there were trees planted along that way, they have all died except this one. It's, uh, it's still healthy.
Occasionally, you get a survivor. I'm concerned about the safety issues, and if you had known that in the tree board, you know, if you'd proven facts before you or testimony or something, saying, you know, these kids were playing underneath, and they came close, and then a car had significant damage to it.
I don't know. All we can do is look at it as it is when we go look at it.
Yeah. Was the last time you looked at it in twenty twenty-two, when she, you had mentioned that?
Um, I actually went by and looked at it. No, we looked at it in June.
Twenty-four.
This year. We looked at it in April, I believe it was, of twenty-two, and then we looked at it this year in June.
Okay.
And it, um, it's a unanimous decision from all five people who looked at it.
Most of the city board members were included in the ballot for our constitution. That's part of this.
So that's, that's our reasoning, you know, what we look for and why we came up with that conclusion. It would be lovely if the whole street had trees, but our budget is so limited, we plant, if we're lucky some years, if we plant five or six trees in town.
Does it make a difference that if this was removed, she had committed to planting another tree?
Um, well, that'd be great, but, you know, I, yes, that would, that would be nice.
And then I guess my kind of question was that the provider, she had told us that three out of four of the people that actually, you know, she consulted with about maintaining the tree, or what their advice would be, said remove, recommended removal. Do you have thoughts on that?
Tree companies will often recommend removal because they get paid a lot more for that. I mean, that's honest, that's the way it is. It's also maybe kind of difficult to trim compared with just taking it down. I don't know.
Eric, have you been over there to see the curb design? Picture that Greg just showed, it's a sidewalk's three inches up already. At the, they have to take a walk out and then cut into the root system to do that, and it looks like the roots are right on the curb right now. I know that when they do street jobs like that, they just have to take them out. And if we have a list of approved trees, and she says she wanted to go ahead and plant an approved tree, you know, you're going to have to grind the stump down, clean it up, and I don't know where your sewer is, but I'm sure those roots are getting close to your sewer, too. Yeah. So I, I think if you, you know, make a commitment to an approved sidewalk, you know, curb sidewalk tree, I don't see a reason not to do it. Sidewalk is a real problem. I can see that right there.
Do you have any other questions for Mrs. Jackson from the tree board? Or is there any interested here and again from the property owner? No? Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate you being here. We all do. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this, um, issue? Okay. Hearing no one, then are there any other comments from council? Would a council member like to make a motion to either affirm or reverse the decision of the tree board?
I'll make a motion to reverse the decision of the tree board.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there further discussion related to that motion to reverse the decision of the tree board?
And it just comes from a point of order, if they have to get into that tree, they have to cut out one or more roots of four inches of a certain size, and then they're going to say the tree has to come down. If that tree's already done that kind of damage to this sidewalk, and it's pressing on the curb, there's a seriously good chance it's going to have to trim the rest. The tree has to come down in the other pair of sidewalks. And that's been, that's been a guideline we use, when a certain size root or percentage is cut, because if we hit the base of the tree, the tree comes down.
I don't like the idea of taking out any trees, but I don't want it to become a safety issue, and it wants a citizen coming to us and ask. Seems like a no-brainer to me.
I, I would say generally, I would try to show some deference to the tree board if it being unanimous decision, but it does sound like there are parts of this that the tree board hasn't taken into consideration, like the sidewalk, like the safety that she's been dealing with for two years now. But I also don't want to flood people removing their trees just because they don't want to pay any of the hassle of them trying. So, um, I don't know.
Well, you have that advantage.
No pressure, Ryan. Figure it out now.
Yeah, I wouldn't consider this lightly, but it's an awfully big tree in this space.
I, I think that's another part of it, is that it's a little bit out of place for where it is. I, I don't think that that's really something that the tree board would take into consideration. They look at the tree itself, not necessarily the surrounding vicinity of the tree and, you know?
I'm just thinking, what all the fall?
Well, it's a tough decision, because I really do respect the work of the tree board, and I know you are all educated and committed to what you're doing, and you have been on the board for a long time. And then we have, you know, the reality of someone that is struggling with branches falling, you know, close to young children playing, it's already damaged a car, and if their other trees have not survived all along, I don't know, you know, this may be healthy. be healthy now, but at what point is it going to be not healthy? And are we going to be able to, you know, is there going to be damage that we can't reverse then as a result of that tree? You know, losing more branches, even if she is consistent and attentive to the needs of the tree. It's, it is likely that it's going to have issues in the future that we can't prevent, but it's a difficult decision. I think we all like our trees, and like the canopy and the benefits that come along with that.
As a former member of the tree board, in fact, Mrs. Jackson replaced me. And I agree, I don't like to see healthy trees come down either, but it looks like there's sidewalk compromise there. And, and I understand your point, it was a 500, 50 vote that the tree is healthy, but when safety becomes a factor, I think it's time to have the tree removed.
Are there any other council comments related to this? Okay. Well, Madam Clerk, could you call and roll? We have a motion to reverse the decision of the tree board. Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Insland?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
President Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Slagle?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinder?
Yes.
Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
I did them on purpose.
Okay. So motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have citizen comments on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to speak to an item that is not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll move on to comments of the council members and city manager. We have Mr. Slagle?
No.
Mrs. Pinder?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Ansland? Mr. Liddy?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Kessler?
You said it with some hesitation.
No, I did not.
Actually, I just came back from a really nice week camping in upstate New York with no trains, no planes, and no cell phone service. No electricity, and no running water, and I was in the cabin, it was extremely peaceful. I came back with some feeling better to come here than I was, want to say, school gate ready to start, they're going to break the habit already. They're going to be running everywhere, and just becoming one another, it's what makes our community great. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor Rogers?
I would just say that today was the first day of school in Tip City. Watch out for kids, and just look out for your neighbors, as Mr. Kessler says. Thank you.
Okay. Great. And then I just wanted to point out, we did have on the agenda tonight, the, for the first reading, and that was to issue the bonds for purchase of property. I will say that the interstate beautification project is underway. That's been something that's been discussed quite a bit. There have been multiple proposals related to that in design, so I think it's good to see that coming to fruition, and I think that that'll be something that will take a few months and inconvenience a lot of people, but ultimately, there will be a benefit to the city to have the entrance to our community looking better. And the CIC has been at work looking at options for the uptown area, and we've been working with Woodard Development Company, and so they are going to be making some recommendations soon. So we would really appreciate having citizen input into this project because it affects all of us. So that more news should be coming soon, as Mr. Mack had said. And so please watch for, there should be information in the newspaper hopefully, and online, and certainly, all the council members are available to discuss that project with anyone that is interested. But at our next meeting in September, we will be voting on that ordinance that was presented tonight on the issuance of bonds. So anyone is welcome to come to the public hearing and speak about that specifically. Mr. Mack?
Yeah, just a couple things. There's a lot of construction going on, so the city finished the asphalt resurfacing project for this year, and that turned out great, including the park around outside, as you all probably noticed here tonight. The industrial sewer project going on, it's moving along. We did have a delay, which, which caused us to close the highest street this week and next week, between Wonderwood Drive and Fifth Street there. So just be aware of that. Schools are aware, obviously, the timing with the start of school isn't great, but, you know, we're working through it with the school district. And as you mentioned, the interstate beautification is underway out there along the highway, and that project is anticipated to be completed in early November. And then lastly, just a note, I've been working with the Tip, the Tip City Chamber of Commerce on a meet the new city manager open house event, so that's been planned, and that's going to be held next week, August 29, from 4 to 6, down at the Tip City Chamber of Commerce.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mack. So I think we're done for tonight. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Side.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call and roll to adjourn. Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinder?
Yes.
Mr. Slagle?
Yes.
President Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Insland? We're here.